Good afternoon, everyone. This is Marie Sullivan, Board President. We're having a little bit of a computer issue with a few folks that are important to this meeting. So I've just asked if we should postpone for a minute and I'm waiting for that answer. As soon as I have that one way or the other, I will move on to the next step and we'll see what that is. So stay muted for right now and I'll be back with you in a minute, I promise. Thank you. The update is that our tech gurus need a couple more minutes, so we'll do that. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Folks, again, this is Marie and I've been asked to give a few more minutes to the tech people. With that, it's 4:35 and let me say, let's try this at 4:40, that's five minutes. So if there's something you'd like to do in the next few minutes, feel free. Keep yourself on mute and I will try again at 4:40. Thank you again, everyone, for your patience. Everyone, again, this is Marie Sullivan and I think we're ready to go. There are some background changes, but I think everything will go smoothly now that we're up and running. So with that, I do have a couple announcements. One, again, we have some accommodations we've made behind the scenes here to get this off the ground. And I expect if we have any glitch, we'll stop and then resume, but for right now, we're good. Secondly, I've been told there are a lot of participants out in the ether this evening. Just want to remind everyone that we're grateful for all those who want to listen to our work session. But in standing with our practice, we don't engage in public comments at this time. Certainly, at the board meeting, we do set aside opportunities to do that. And we can discuss what those directions are at that point. Our meeting next week will also be virtual. So there are some shifts in how we manage our sit-ins and interim during that time. So for those people who may want to present, there is an option to forward comments and deal with our assistant So just wanted to put that out there. So with that, I'd like to call to order our work session for this evening, October 19, 2021. This work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. Our topic this evening for our work session is health education at Maricopa Community Colleges. I want to remind everyone, we're live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. Before I turn this meeting over then to the presenters, I'd like to call roll for the record of board members and with that, I'll start with our student trustee, Mr. Evans. Are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith? Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
Ms. Smith, are you present? With that, I'll note for the record that currently we have six board members and our student trustee present for this work session. And again, moving forward, now I can hear you. Thank you, Jacqueline. So I'll modify that to say all of our board members are present for this work session, including our student trustee. So as we're going to receive the healthcare education at Maricopa Community Colleges report, Dr. Gonzalez, I'll turn it to you and ask you to introduce our presenters. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sullivan, board members, members of CEC and guests that are with us here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to provide this presentation on what Maricopa does related to healthcare education. A significant amount of educational programs and significant amount of workforce development that's provided to these programs and it's got a great reputation throughout Maricopa County and around the state. People are fully aware of the excellent work that Maricopa Community Colleges do to prepare its students and graduates to enter the workforce to be successful. And also the continued training that we do once these professionals have been out in the workplace and need to continue in education units as a part of their requirements. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our interim provost, Dr. Eric Leginski, who will introduce his team and we will be underway here quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Gonzalez and President Sullivan, members of the board, members of CEC, our Maricopa colleagues and guests. Thank you so much for joining us this evening for what we hope is a very informative and interactive conversation as we go through healthcare education at the Maricopa Community Colleges system. Our intent for you tonight is that you will hear an overview of our healthcare education program. You'll have a sense to get a sense of our achievement of our students and the great work that they do and their ability to become employed across our county and make a difference in the lives of many. In addition, we'll take a deeper dive into our nursing program and get a sense of, again, the intricacies of our clinical placements and some of the questions that have emerged regarding our site partnerships as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our two lead presenters for today. Dr. Margie Schultz, who is our Director of Maricopa Nursing, along with Rochelle Rivas, who is our District Director for Healthcare Education. We'll have approximately a 30-minute presentation and then afterwards, we'll leave at least 15 or 20 minutes for question and answer and we'll do our best to stick to that timeframe. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to both Dr. Margie Schultz and also Ms. Rochelle Rivas.
Thank you, Provost, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is Rochelle Rivas, District Director for Healthcare Education, Workforce and Economic Development Division. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. As the Provost stated, I will be presenting with my colleague, Dr. Margie Schultz, Department Chair for Nursing at Gateway Community College and Maricopa Nursing Administrator. Next slide, please. The Maricopa Community College District is the largest integrated healthcare education system in the state. It comprises over 70 healthcare programs across 10 campuses and skill centers. These programs graduate over 2,000 students and enroll over 8,000 students annually. Maricopa healthcare programs train professionals for some of the most high-demand occupations in the state, which include registered nurse, respiratory therapy, pharmacy technician, medical assisting, and many more. Eighty percent of our graduates are working in the healthcare, as a healthcare professional. Some programs achieve employment rates of 90 to 100%, including 100% employment rate for diagnostic medical sonography graduates, orthognic assistant, hospital central services. Graduates from our electro-neurodiagnostic and polysonography programs are employed at nearly every Phoenix metro area and are at least 50% of the workforce in these fields. Next slide, please. Since 2018, Healthcare Education Department has conducted a workforce survey that is provided to all healthcare graduates. The next three slides, we will highlight the data that is collected from these surveys. Since the inception of the survey, we have had a response rate of anywhere between 9 to 15% each year for a cumulative total of over 2,000 students responding. As I mentioned in the previous slide, 80% of our graduates are working in a healthcare profession. Out of the 80%, 69% are working full-time and 11% are working part-time. 10% are working outside of healthcare. And 20% of our graduates are continuing their education and earning degrees or improving skills. A small percentage, 6%, are not doing any of the above. If you're calculating the percentage, you may notice that it does calculate over 100%. So I wanted to provide some clarification about the data. So students had an opportunity to respond and select multiple options. So that is why it is over 100%. For example, many of our students selected that they are working part-time as well as continuing education and training. Next slide, please. We also asked our students, how easy is it to find jobs after graduation? 33% stated that it was very easy to find employment. 37% of the responses stated it was easy. 20% stated that it was difficult to find employment. And then 9% stated very difficult. Given the current workforce and demand for healthcare professionals, we are anticipating an increase in how easy it will become for graduates to find employment after graduation in the upcoming year. Next slide, please. The following slide provides graduate satisfaction overall for all healthcare programs once they have completed at Maricopa Community College. As you can see, 43% of those who responded were very satisfied with their training. 34% were satisfied, 13 felt training was okay. And then a small percentage of 4% were dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with the training. Next slide, please. So now that we have discussed healthcare as a whole, I would like to focus the remainder of the presentation on our largest healthcare program, Maricopa Nursing. My colleague, Dr. Schultz, will begin with providing an overview of our nursing programs.
Thank you, Rochelle. I appreciate that. And I would like to talk a little bit about Maricopa Nursing. Maricopa Nursing is actually the umbrella term for many programs that are held at the Maricopa County Community Colleges. Maricopa Nursing actually came to be in 2008. And since then, it has grown with a lot of innovation in the programs. I have listed several of the programs here for you to take a look at. It is the RN program, which is very common. And it is available at all eight of the colleges that have Maricopa Nursing programs. We also have the Nurse Assistant Program, which is currently available at five colleges, but will be extending to at least one other and possibly two other locations in the very near future. We have the Licensed Practical Nurse Program as well as a step out from the Maricopa Nursing Program. The step out is available at all eight colleges with a terminal, and we kind of hate to say terminal with the nursing programs, but a terminal program with the Licensed Practical Nurse Program available at one college currently and two more that will be adding programs. Then we have the other programs such as the Paramedic to RN Veterans Bridge Course, which is a very popular program where we get students from across the nation into this program who have a medical designation from the military and they come and they can become LPNs and then move into our RN program. We have the Refresher Programs and then we have several other that we would call foundational programs available at one or more colleges. The Industry Programs, which we created approximately two and a half years ago. And those are continuing to grow in popularity. The pandemic slowed us down a bit on many of those. And then we have Continuing Education that is offered. Different programs and different courses are offered at a variety of the colleges. The Concurrent Enrollment Program, the CEP, is offered at all of the Maricopa Nursing Colleges. And just as a reminder, that is the program that is, it's a separate admission program. Once people have gained access to the Maricopa Nursing waitlist, they are then able to apply as a separate admission program to the Concurrent Enrollment Program. And that's for students who wish to partner with one of our universities that are listed here on the slide. And the students can select any university that they wish. And these students earn their Baccalaureate of Science in Nursing simultaneously with the Associate of Applied Science from Maricopa. And many of them graduate with dual degrees during the same semester. So it's rigorous, but many students choose the Concurrent Enrollment Program. And I think Rochelle then is going to detail a little bit more about that on the next slide, please.
Thank you, Margie. So as we mentioned, Maricopa is one of the largest nursing programs. We produce close to 1,000 nurses in the state each year. In 2020, we had approximately 956 graduates enter the workforce. We produced three times the number of nurses in Arizona than any provider or institution. 83% have obtained employment as a registered nurse immediately after graduation. In 2021, Maricopa had a 92% of first-time pass rate for the National Council Licenseur Examination, also known as the NCLEX, which is above the national and state average. The NCLEX is a national examination for licensing of nurses in the United States, Canada, and Australia. As you can see on the graph, we demonstrate the satisfactory of our eight nursing programs when students have completed. The graph shows the projection from 2015 to 2020. After 2017, you can see we've been consistent in the student satisfactory where it stayed around the 50% range. In 2020, 40% were satisfied with the program as they completed it. Next slide, please. So my colleague highlighted our Concurrent Enrollment Program. So we wanted to just provide you a little bit of data around the program. 64% of our RN students are currently enrolled in a CEP program. In spring of 2020, 41% of the CEP students have selected Arizona State University Pathway. And if you look to the graph to the right, we break down the six various partners and the percentage of enrollment in each of our partners. The gray highlights are 2020 enrollment percentage and then, oh, I'm sorry. The blue highlights are 2020 enrollment percentage and the gray highlights are 2021. So ASU consistently stays at that high interest for our CEP students. Our CEP students have a 96% first-time pass rate for the NCLEX exam, again, higher than the national and the state average. In 2020, 95% of our CEP students were employed as RNs immediately after graduation. And 89% of our students complete the Concurrent Enrollment Program in six semesters. Next slide, please.
And I'm going to give you just a very brief overview of the program elements that make up the RN program of Maricopa Nursing. In Block 1, we cover the fundamentals of nursing and care of older adults. This is where we seek long-term care, assisted living, and sometimes rehab care for our clinical experiences in Block 1. These cover the basic skills and in some instances, communication skills with the older adults that are in these facilities is one of the most important and basic skills. We do strive to get hospital clinical experiences when available, but the primary goal of Block 1 is to orient the student to talking to patients and families and the long-term care aspect of caring for older adults. In Block 2, that's where we really do the introduction to acute care and that is med surg or medical surgical and also care of the psychiatric patient. Clinical experiences are hospital-oriented. They are in basic level care units. We also strive to get our students in the perioperative suites so they can see the entire curriculum for perioperative. And hopefully, we get them into an operating suite so they can actually see an operation. We also strive to get psychiatric inpatient. And sometimes that evolves into clinics, but we do want them to participate in groups and caring for the client that has psychiatric needs. In Block 3, we are looking for a higher level of acute care. And in that, we are looking for patients who maybe are a little more down the continuum of care. We are also looking for care of the obstetrical patient. Clinical experiences here are going to be at higher skill levels where students will be inserting IVs, they'll be inserting NG tubes, nasogastric tubes. They'll be doing those higher-level skills. And the patients obviously are a little more ill in Block 3. So we need those units that can provide those clinicals to the students. And we also look at placing students in obstetrical units where hopefully they can see a birth or they can at least get an idea of the whole perinatal opportunities that are available to students. In Block 4, that is really the senior level for students. We're looking at the deteriorating patient. Very often, these students are in ICU. And failure to rescue is a big component of Block 4 where we are really asking the student to use those clinical judgment skills and to look at the whole patient. They're dealing with patients and families in some of the ICU areas, emergency department. So we're really looking at a much higher level of care, getting them ready to graduate and pass the NCLEX. We also do pediatrics in Block 4. So our clinical experiences look at a capstone course that looks at leadership, which is done in a hospital setting where they can really get the feel for care of the entire family at that very acute level of care. And they also very often will work in telemetry. And then we also seek to get a pediatric inpatient experience. And that's almost more dealing with family and the family interactions with that pediatric patient. So we do try and give a very well-rounded experience, including all of our competencies in these four blocks of care. Next slide, please. Just to deal a little bit more into the clinical experience expectations of Maricopa Nursing, all students in all programs, and that's all the programs that have clinical experiences, they are required to meet the requirements wherever we are able to obtain clinical experiences. And Rochelle is going to talk just a little bit more about the consortium and how that all comes together to help us meet the level and learning outcomes for each program. One thing that we do discuss in our faculty instructional meetings, which we hold twice a semester, where all nursing faculty from all of the eight colleges come together, is nursing faculty are truly committed to providing the best in-person clinical experience that we can possibly give to our students. And we all very carefully vet these clinical facilities that offer these experiences to our students because we want them to meet the competencies of our program. And we do use simulation. It is used as a resource. It is definitely an enhancement for the curriculum and the competencies that we have. But our simulations were never intended nor constructed to replace a clinical experience totally. You really cannot replace that human experience. Just to share with you, at a very recent meeting at the Arizona State Board of Nursing, it was discussed that simulation can be used, but it does not consistently meet that level of competency that is required. And at another statewide meeting where there were several of the colleges, both universities and community colleges and private institutions as well, but they did share that it is actually the philosophy of all of us that students must attend in-person clinical and they are not substituting simulation for students who were not possibly vaccinated for COVID or who didn't meet the requirements for whatever reason. But it was intended that these students would all complete clinical and that we would not be graduating any student who had not had ample opportunity to have the clinical experience to complete our competencies. Rochelle, next slide, please.
Thank you, Margie. So to understand the process of the coordination for the clinical collaborative, I thought it would be beneficial just to provide a brief overview of how this process was established and how Maricopa Community College became the facilitators and the manager of this statewide collaborative. So in the late 90s, a community commission was appointed to reform the delivery of healthcare education within Maricopa County Community College District. One of the final recommendations of the commission was to establish a system to coordinate clinical placement requests within the district nursing programs. In 2001, Maricopa Community College created a clinical placement system. And it was house-managed through the District Healthcare Education Department. In 2001 and 2002, ASU and GCU joined our placement system. By 2003, we've had all nursing programs across the state that were placed in within Maricopa County join the placement system. Once we had expanded to all nursing programs, we quickly began a collaboration. The group came together to outline the process, guiding principles, and rules for clinical placement based on this system that Maricopa had developed. It since then has grown and we had decommissioned the original system and now are utilizing a third-party vendor for clinical scheduling. Next slide, please. So now that we have the extorable context, I'm going to briefly walk through what this process entails. So the clinical coordination and collaboration system and process was developed to respond to the expanding number of nursing programs and the decreasing number of clinical opportunities for nursing students. Maricopa Community College has a dedicated coordinator that is a district employee whose role is to facilitate student placement for all participating nursing programs in an impartial, non-biased manner. So the process, once our clinical agencies have established a capacity, all nursing programs will submit their requests. Now, they are submitting requests for multiple facilities for multiple specialty areas across Maricopa County. So once we identify what these capacities are, our agencies will clearly communicate if there are any preferential scheduling. For example, a facility may identify that a BSM-level nurse or program will have preferential status over an associate's degree-level nurse or an LPN. Or a facility may identify that they have an affiliation or a partnership with a particular academic entity and that that academic program will have a preference at that facility. Once all of our requests are submitted, each nursing program will work collaboratively to review all the requests and finalize the scheduling. And again, I want to emphasize, this is for every facility, every specialty within that facility. And everyone is working together to ensure that they obtain the clinical experiences that they need. Once all the scheduling has been worked out, all of the requests are then pushed forward in the scheduling system for our clinical agencies to review and approve. Clinical agencies will always have the final say over the acceptance of any group. So the system as a whole was built to respond to the expanding nursing programs in our state and also create an equitable and streamlined process for nursing scheduling. Next slide, please. So this is the data for our Fall 2021. So I hope this gives a good idea of the numbers that we were dealt with for this fall semester for clinical placement. Please keep in mind, we are dealing with, since COVID, it has impacted the ability or the number of clinical opportunities for nursing students. We have seen a 40% reduction in participation of our facilities. We have seen a 40% reduction in participation of our facilities during this COVID time. We're not only placing our students in these large systems such as Banner, Honor Health, we are also placing our students in long-term care facilities, school districts, possibly sites outside of our county. So these, these capacities are changing and are reduced due to COVID-19. So these are our typical numbers that we would usually manage prior to COVID. So for the fall cycle, we finalized and placed over 1,500 clinical rotations for the fall semester. Maricopa Community Colleges finalized and placed about 536 rotations for the fall semester. All of these rotations are for cohorts of students. Our cohorts range anywhere from two to 10 students per rotation. The average group size for the fall semester was around eight. We had 25 facilities participating in the collaboration. These 25 facilities do include our large banner or our large system organizations such as Banner, Dignity Health. So these sites had additional campuses that we were placing for. For this fall cycle, we had over 30 academic institutions that participated in the collaboration. These programs included high school CNA programs, LPN programs, as well as our BSN and Associate's Degree Nursing. Our academic partners that participate in the collaboration are placing for multiple programs and multiple campuses across the state. Next slide, please. I believe this concludes the healthcare education overview. I know we provided a lot of information. As the Provost stated, the goal of the presentation was to provide an overview of healthcare education at Maricopa, highlight our successes as a district, and share the intricate process for nursing clinical placement. I would like to thank the board again for your time and opportunity to present. And we would now open it up to any question or comments that the board may have.
Thank you very, there we go. Thank you very much for your presentation and it was quite thorough and hopefully answered many questions. However, this is the opportunity for board members to ask things. So what I'm going to do is I usually do is just go down the list. And with that, I'm going to start with our student trustee, Mr. Evans. Do you have any questions or comments for this evening?
I do not present Sullivan.
Thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith. I know it takes us a few minutes to go off and on mute. Ms. Bitter Smith, do you have any comments or questions?
Oh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, my apologies. I was talking into the ozone. I, I may have some questions, but I'd like to reserve the right to come back to do that. I'm working my way through my notes if I might.
Okay, I'll come back to you then. Thank you. Mrs. McGrath.
Yes.
Go ahead. You have the floor or the space or your turn. Okay, go ahead. Mrs. McGrath, you can ask your questions now.
I have no questions.
Oh, you have no questions. I apologize. Excuse me. It was hard for me to hear it. Thank you. Dr. Norene, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions. Just want to congratulate everyone in the nursing program for an excellent program that they put together. And thanks, because we're all going to be needing them at some point very soon, I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Smith.
My question, first to make sure, can you hear me, please?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm wondering to what extent you anticipate having more facilities participate moving forward? I heard you speak about the decline in clinical partners. And I'm wondering if they're giving you any indication as to when some of those who have stepped away will be able to return? Or when you might, when you might start to see an increase in their willingness to take on students? Thank you.
President Sullivan, Board Member Smith, we are currently in the process of identifying what the capacities are going to be for the spring semester. We are hoping that we see some expansion of clinical capacities with these facilities for spring and summer. So it's, it's hard for us to tell right now, given just the COVID-19 environment that we are in and that that is changing on a daily basis. So it's, it's hard to give that definite answer. But we are hoping that we are going to see an expansion of capacities this spring. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Smith?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Thor.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I want to thank the presenters for really excellent presentation. I learned a great deal and, and found it to be very, very informative. My question is, do we know how our process for clinical placement compares to other large urban areas with multiple nursing programs? In other words, say a Dallas or a Miami or Chicago or whatever. I guess that's it. How do we compare to what others are doing in similar situations?
President Sullivan, Board Member Thor, thank you for the question. We do, actually, Arizona is pretty unique into the process that we have established with this clinical placement consortium that has been created. I know myself and my colleague, Dr. Schultz, has spoken with other systems that are as large as ours and talked through what we do. So to my knowledge, and Dr. Schultz, please correct me if I'm wrong, we are unique in, in the way that we, we have a streamlined process for clinical placement.
That's true, Rochelle. Thank you. And indeed, we are asked to really talk to other large districts about how we do facilitate our consortium. And the thanks really goes to Rochelle and her team, because it really is a huge benefit to, not just nursing, but I know that they're working with other programs as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That answer doesn't surprise me at all. I think that the system that you've put together is something that we should be very proud of and be, and should be sharing with other urban areas in this country. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Nguyen.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
How many students did we flunk out of the program last Friday that were in our nursing program because they didn't accommodate the vaccine mandate?
Thank you very much for the question. President Sullivan and Board Member Nguyen, we ended up losing. And when I say losing, these are students who chose to withdraw at this point, but we are reaching out to these students as well. We have lost 31 students total throughout all eight colleges who chose to withdraw. And that is the total number. We anticipate reaching out to these students, as we already have this semester and will again next semester, to make sure that we can try and assist these students.
So last year, we had only virtual clinics because of COVID. And were those nurses that graduated last year substandard?
They were not, they were not only given what would be like a simulation or a virtual simulation. Most of those students who had graduated had experienced two semesters of actual clinical, in-person clinical, I'm sorry, not actual, but in-person clinical.
So because we have eight sites, some of the professors and some of our colleges have allowed students to, if they were going in person and had been not vaccinated, flip with a student that has been vaccinated. And so we have instructors that are trying to get around this and are helping, because we had 75 students, I believe, that were in this position. Unfortunately, some of the students that we terminated their education last Friday were straight A students. And with the need for nurses, it's really disappointing that we couldn't accommodate them with virtual clinics. I'd also just like to say that in your report, you didn't say it this way, but the Arizona State Board of Nursing is still allowing virtual for graduation. They still, and they're the, they're the agency that certifies these nurses. We have 36 clinical sites and we only checked with eight of them. We didn't check with 26. We, these nursing students were told that we were too busy to check to see if we could do virtual. And I think that we've really done a disservice to these nursing students. And here we are as the governing board, and we won't meet in person, but yet we're demanding that they go do something in person. And we've denied all medical and all religious exemptions. And I don't know who, after someone has spent all their money and energy and time being educated and has a 4.0 and is medically compromised, that we demand that they get a vaccine and we flunked them out on Friday. That is, that is a horrible precedent to set. And, and I am confident, because we did that, we will be sued. I am, I am absolutely certain of that. And that is unfortunate, because when this all started back in August, I made every effort to talk to Dr. Gonzalez, to talk to Provost Luchinsky, and to try to work out the situation. So I'm really disappointed that we let 31 wonderful nursing students go on Friday because we were unwilling to compromise our vaccine policy. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Ms. Bitter Smith.
I do now have some follow-up questions, Mrs. Sullivan, if I, if I might.
Yes, go ahead.
So can, I go back to the issue that was raised about exemptions, medical and religious exemptions. Who actually is making the decision on accepting or denying those? Is that indeed the district or is it in a conversation with a clinical provider?
And this is Margie Schultz, if I may. Maricopa doesn't have a policy to deny anyone. That comes from our clinical facilities. And some are unwilling to have unvaccinated people in their facility to care for their patients. So...
Thank you. That's what I understood. I was just making sure that all of us understood.
Yes, we did not deny anyone for religious or medical accommodations.
If I, if I could, thank you for that. If I could follow up with whomever is appropriate to answer this. The 31 students that have exited the program currently, what, and we've talked about communicating with them on accommodations and how to continue their education, what options are being offered to them? Are you able to, to talk a little bit about that for us?
Yes, and I, oh, I'm sorry, Rochelle, go right ahead.
Oh, no, Margie, you can answer.
I just wanted to say, if there's, if there's one student that withdraws or somehow doesn't finish, that's one too many. And so because of what has occurred with our clinical facilities, we are reaching out individually to these, each one of these students and meeting with them either in person or virtually as their preference is. We are hoping very much to bring them back in spring. We are sharing with them that we do not yet know what the clinical facilities will be requiring, because some of those are changing quite frequently. And we are very much hoping to bring them back in spring or summer or fall of 2022 to complete their programs, because we do want them to be successful. We want every student in our programs to be successful. And we're sharing that with these students. And it's understandable that there, there are difficulties, because we just really don't know from day to day what the clinical facilities are doing. However, we are going to stay with them. We are going to keep in contact with these students and we hope that every one of them will complete the program.
Ms. Sullivan?
I, I don't know. Yes, Mrs. Nguyen, but I'd like to make sure that Mrs. Bitter Smith gets finished. Thank you.
I, I just, I just have one, just one follow-up, Ms. Sullivan, if I, if I could. I understand, but I, I understand that obviously the State Board of Nursing, at the end of the day, sets up the standards for clinical providers. And I, I'm just validating what I have been told, that in fact, all of our clinical providers are, you know, are in that system with us, because they meet all of the criteria the State Board of Nursing suggests and requires. And that to add existing providers would certainly require the State Board of Nursing's approval or guidance. Am I correct in that assumption?
Rochelle, did you have a response to that? I, the State Board really doesn't, they have rules and guidelines that we must follow for our curriculum, but they don't really govern the, the providers. And I may have misunderstood the question. I'm sorry.
And I may not have phrased it very well. Let me try, let me try again. What I, what I'm trying to determine is how do we make, for the benefit of those listening and for the board, how do we make the decision on who are our finite list of providers? Our understanding that many, currently particularly, many clinic, many providers are, are not staffed heavily enough to do both what their, their real job is as well as doing the clinical training. How do we, as the district, determine who that list of providers is? Maybe that's a better way to phrase the question.
So I, I can chime in, Margie. So we do have guidelines that, and Margie can speak more in detail about accreditation, state board licensure, on the type of facilities that meet the requirements for these clinical experiences. Given COVID-19, we do have facilities that have completely shut down and that are not currently accepting students. And to Margie's point, that is the purview of the facility to, to restrict or unrestrictive, for lack of a better term, of these, who is being sent to the facilities. Did that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much and thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Sure. Mrs. Nguyen, I'll go back to you before I close this. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just have one last question. I apologize. I had written it down. I forgot to...
That's okay. Go ahead.
So it's my understanding that currently, some of our clinical partners are allowing virtual clinics, that every single one of our nursing students is not in person. Am I, am I completely off-base on that? Or am I correct in, in that some of our students currently are in virtual clinics?
President Sullivan?
Yeah. I, I don't, I, I guess I'm not quite clear on what virtual clinics are, because we're sending all of our students to hands-on, person-to-person clinical experiences. Rochelle, did you have a, a different response?
I was going to state that. To my knowledge, we are not doing virtual clinics. All of our programs have been in in-person rotation for the past year.
Okay, I think that that's not accurate, but I, I will trust that you know it's your program. And I, that's fine. Thank you for the answer.
I'd like to interrupt on that one. Ms. Nguyen, do you have knowledge of a specific program in mind that you can ask about?
I didn't bring it, I, I have notes from students that switched. So students that are currently, they switch to someone in their class and they're doing virtual and their co-student is doing in-person. And I want to say it's through Paradise Valley. I think there's one in Mesa. So there are several students that, that... So there are several students that, that are not, uh, that the, that they are doing virtual, that the provider, there's 36 providers, that the provider is doing virtual clinics. So I, I do believe that there are some, but I, I don't have that information tonight. Um, I'm happy to provide it to, to the people that did the presentation. I appreciate the presentation, but I think we're, we're misinformed. And I just want to make sure that what I've been told is accurate. So I will send that on to you.
Uh, Ms. Schultz, and can you follow up with that, uh, question? And you're stating there aren't any, unless there's some nuance to this, which is unclear, and share whatever is then discussed between you and Ms. Winn with all board members, please?
I believe I, I might have an answer to that.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
And if not, please, um, please do share with me and I will be happy to find the answer. At all colleges, we all do some simulation. We did not, we do not have any student who is not doing medical, surgical, critical care and leadership in person. Because quite honestly, to be a nurse, you cannot graduate from a program and be competent if you haven't been in a clinical setting with a live human. So we do have simulation at all of our colleges. And we do some things in simulation because it's a wonderful tool. It's a wonderful resource and we all use it. So there are simulations that are happening at all of the colleges. However, and I have talked with all of the directors at all of the programs and said, do you have any students who are not doing in-person clinical this semester? And the answer was no, we're placing them all in medical, surgical, critical care and leadership. So there, there is some simulation. I don't know of any facilities that do any sort of virtual clinical, unless it would perhaps be telemedicine and that would be a day or two that would be an experience. But other than that, I'm not aware, but please know, I am happy to research and would return with an answer for all of you.
I really appreciate that.
And I really appreciate the question because we all need to understand for sure. Thank you.
Uh, so thank you very much for that. Uh, I don't have any particular question. I did want to say thank you for coming to the, our work session and providing this information and amount of detail for all of us to understand and appreciate the conditions and circumstances by which we offer an outstanding program. It, it's always unfortunate when people make choices to leave a program, but I certainly appreciate that you're reaching out to determine how they can be supported through next steps, um, along the way. And if there's any information or inquiry that was made this evening that you believe we need greater understanding or more information or clarification, would you please, um, keep that in your notes and then send us that as follow-up? Is there any other question that you might have for us, the board? Or are we going to move on? Uh, with that then, I'm going to say thank you to all board members for attending the work session and for asking their questions. And thank you to the presenters for your, your thoughtfulness and presentation this evening. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, for bringing your team forward with this and Dr. Lusinski as well. So I'm going to pause for two minutes and then as I close the work session before I recall us to order for agenda review. So with that, um, I'll go on mute for one minute or two minutes and call you all back at 5:34. How's that? 35. Thank you again. Okay, folks, it looks like we're ready to go with the material on the screen for those of you who are able to enter in as panelists and view the screen. So we're going forward, um, with that. And thank you for technology for coming through for us. With that then, uh, this time I call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of October 19, 2021. Today, we're going to review the agenda for the October 26, 2021 board meeting. For the record, again, I call all of the board members and I'll start with our student trustee, Mr. Evans. Are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith? Thank you. Mrs. McGrath? Hi, Mrs. McGrath, are you present? I'll come back to you. Dr. Norene?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Winn?
Present. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath, are you present? I'm not sure if she's still on mute for those of you who help her out there, technology. With that, I'm going to, with my presence, I will say all board members, six board members are present, one possibly absent, and our student trustees present as well. So with that, we'll move into a review of the agenda to be presented October 26. We will have the normal course of events as we convene and move through appropriate reports, which would take us to consideration of the consent agenda. So with that, I will note that the first item for discussion on the consent agenda will be approval of the 2022 state legislative agenda and 2022 federal policy and budgetary agenda. Board members, are there any comment or questions?
Ms. Sullivan, this is Jean McGrath. I'm present now.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. We'll amend the record to represent that all board members, including our student trustee, are present. So thank you. Thank you for that. Does anyone have a question on that item, approval of the legislative agenda, et cetera?
Ms. Sullivan, this is Susan. I just wanted to thank the legislative team for their changes and modifications that we talked about at our last meeting to the state legislative agenda and the federal agenda as well. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Then moving on to item three on the agenda, approval of approval of acceptance of one-year funding of $809,730 from the U.S. Department of Education for the Hispanic-serving institutions, science, technology, engineering, or mathematics and articulation programs award at Glendale Community College. The award is for a five-year project from October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2026 totaling $4,057,766. Is there any comment or question from board members? Being none, moving on to the next item, approval of approval of acceptance of U.S. Department of Education Hispanic-serving institutions stamina articulation grant for Mesa Community College. Is there any comment or question? Being none, moving to then item five on the agenda, approval of approval of acceptance of funding for year two of the five-year grant award closing achievement gaps through holistic support, work-based experiences and equity-minded practices awarded by the U.S. Department of Education Developing Serving Institutions Program Title V for Phoenix College in the amount of $597,850 for funding period October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022. Are there any comments or questions?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Ms. Bittersmith?
I have, I don't have a question about this item specifically, but I have a generic question that relates to the last three items that will be on consent. At last week, I know we learned that our four-year public institutions have made decisions on a masking policy predicated upon getting federal funding in a recent executive order. I'm just asking generically if our staff is looking at that executive order and reviewing whether or not we may end up having those same constraints placed upon us, given the, obviously the existing federal monies we have and potential new monies that are coming in the door. I'm not sure who could answer that. I'm not looking for an answer this evening. I just want to make sure that that review is being undertaken.
Uh, Ms. Bittersmith, I can answer that yes, in fact, there is review in place, but we're, another additional comment, not too much because it's not on the agenda. Uh, Dr. Gonzalez, can you answer that question, please?
Yes, um, Mrs. President Sullivan, Mrs. Bittersmith, it's a, it's an excellent question. And as we indicated in the communication that went out across the district on Friday afternoon, it is under current review as it applies to our district. And the, the question really centers on what is applicable in terms of federal dollars. And so I would ask Melissa Flores, our interim general counsel, to come in and provide a brief response to that. I can say generically responding is that we continue to review that to get at the heart of, of the answer. And that may be all that Melissa's able to say, but I'll encourage her to come on.
Hello, President Sullivan?
Yes, and, and you will keep it to a very generic piece. If this is something we will need to put on the agenda for next week, we will. But if you can answer the question, just topic right now, that would be good.
Absolutely. Um, President Sullivan, members of the board, chancellor, the, I'm going to keep it very brief and say that we are actively looking to see what our compliance obligations are. And, um, and we're making sure that we're looking at all areas of federal funding.
Thank you. Is, is that satisfactory at this time for you, Ms. Bittersmith?
Absolutely. It is not agenda. That's why I'm asking the generic question and I've got, I've gotten the answer. Thank you very much.
Certainly. Thank you. Moving on to the noted item six on the agenda, approval of approval of renewal of five-year district-wide contract that allows for the continuation of Maricopa's use of the broadly adopted Canvas learning management system with the option to renew for up to five more years using RFP 3460-10. Are there any comments or questions? Being none, we'll move on to item seven, approval of approval of new contract awards to segment marketing four hundred and annually under Maricopa County Community College District, RFP 3478-10 for large-scale system-level enrollment-focused outreach campaigns, contact center services. It's quite a mouthful. Any comments or questions? Item eight, approval of approval of intergovernmental agreement between Chandler Gilbert Community College and East Valley Institute of Technology for embedded college advisors program. Any questions or comments from board members? Being none, moving on to item nine, approval of approval of intergovernmental agreement between South Mountain Community College and Phoenix Union High School District for embedded college advisors program. Any questions or comment from board members? Moving on to item 10, approval of approval of curriculum, item proposal, courses modifications five and new one, occupational program modification one. Any comments or questions? Okay. Being none, uh, the next item on the agenda would be the first reading information of employment and separations, August 21, 21 through September 17, 21. Uh, that report was sent under confidence, but any comments or questions in general? Being none, moving on, the next item would be the monitoring report for the budget analysis report fund one, general unrestricted fund for the three months ending 9/30/2021. Any comments or questions? Being none, uh, the, we will then conclude next week's meeting with governing board reports of current events, et cetera. Then I would like to note as we move on to the comment on establishment of next meeting dates on October 20, which is tomorrow. The board will adjourn initially in a public board meeting and then adjourn into an executive session meeting. So please look at your email for your connectivity, both to the start of the board meeting and then the connection to our e-session. And that is posted with comment. Then, uh, on October 26, we will convene a work session at 5:00 PM to be followed by our board meeting with this agenda at 6:30 PM. The agenda, or excuse me, the work session is tied to a deeper dive into enrollment registration and look forward to that. And then you can also see that there is a, a meeting on November 16, also with a work session and agenda review beginning at 4:30 November 23. I realize it's Thanksgiving week. I think it's Thanksgiving week. We'll go into a regular board meeting at 6:30. So, um, with that then being the, the agenda for next week and there being no further comment for board members, I will then adjourn the agenda review and look forward, board members, to talking with you tomorrow. With that, uh, may everyone enjoy a nice evening and thank you for your time this, this evening. And thank you, technology, for coming through. Appreciate it. Good night.